October 12th, 2021. Please stand as we are led in invocation by Dr. Bryant Pugh, Outbreak Christian Center, and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Let us bow our heads. Father, we thank you today. We thank you for life, God. We thank you for opportunity. Most of all, God, this morning, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. Father, we thank you, and we ask you this morning, God, to strengthen the hearts of those that may have lost something in this season. Father, today, we ask you to be in everything that's said and everything that we do. Father, give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding we need, God, to make this great city of Mobile the light that sits upon a hill that cannot be hidden. Father, we thank you and we praise you for everything that you're going to say and do in the midst of us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I want to ask everyone to please remain standing. We're going to turn the floor over to Mrs. Gregory.
Thank you. I would ask you all to join us in a moment of silent prayer for two gentlemen who I think most of you all will recognize their names. Paul Sousa, we are sad to announce that Paul died on this past October 10th. He was 84 years old. You probably remember him from the school systems here in Mobile County. He was assistant principal at Murphy High School in the 60s. He was superintendent of the school system here in Mobile County, also superintendent in Saraland, and was part of the team to separate Chickasaw from the public school system back in 2010. His funeral will be tomorrow. Also, Father Greg Lucy, who was the 34th and 36th president of Spring Hill College. Father Lucy was the 2005 Civitan Club of Mobile's Mobillion of the Year. He received that award. In 2013 and 15, he returned to, or through 15, he returned to Spring Hill College to serve as his president. In 2015, he was then appointed chancellor, and he served the college until 2020. And his funeral services are today. So if you would, just join us all in a moment of silent prayer.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. Welcome to our council meeting. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for the summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is not to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who desire to speak. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk, please silence your electric communications devices.
I was just a little late.
Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of the meeting of October the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
They're properly moving the second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Most of the passes.
Communications from the mayor.
I hope the president doesn't put me in timeout, but I would understand if he did. Appreciate everybody being here today. It's another great day in the city of Mobile, as Councilman John Williams loves to say. You know, this, we have just a few announcements, then I have a couple of proclamations to read. One is, is that I think many people have been waiting to see when we're going to start recycling again. And so thankfully, the Enmark Coast Utility Authority is where we take our recyclable materials, is opening back up. And so we hope to reopen our facilities here in Mobile tomorrow. And so if those who are interested in recycling can go back to our recycling centers and know that we will be able to handle them going forward. I do want to thank everybody for their patience. That is the only place that we have to take recyclable materials, and so because they've been down, it's really caused a lot of angst amongst a lot of our citizens. Many of you are aware and have heard the conversations in these, this arena, this amphitheater regarding the American Rescue Plan, about the amount of money the city of Mobile has received and how that money is being planned to be distributed into the community. But last week, the community and external affairs team were hosting meetings with their nonprofits concerning the opportunities around these funds. We had more than 125 nonprofits attend those meetings so that they understand what the process is for being considered for possible funding. And I know that during that time, we answered, I think, all the questions that they had. And there will be more information forthcoming regarding the ARP funding. Last night was the first time in eight years that I've ever done a ribbon cutting at night, and we did it at Spanish Plaza. Many of you may not know where Spanish Plaza is, but it's on Government Street between here and the Chamber of Commerce. It was originally dedicated in 1968. Came about because of a group of Mobilians, built relationships from individuals in Spain. Anyway, if you ever walked through it in the last few years, it was in disrepair, but originally, it had to have been one of the most magnificent parks in the city of Mobile with all the tile and the mosaics, the plaques, the statuary. Anyway, so we started this process about two years ago, and we're going through three phases of rehabilitating Spanish Plaza. The fountain is now working. You can have colors for the lights for the fountain. Everything has been trimmed up so that you can see the statuary from Government Street if you're walking or driving down Government Street looking into the plaza. A lot of the landscaping has been changed, but we still have more things to do, and that's like replace a lot of the tile that are missing on the benches. Anyway, it's a, from a heritage standpoint, because of this, our Spanish heritage, and that one time, it was one of the three major empires that had a foothold in the city of Mobile. We just felt like it was, it needed to be shined back up and showcased. And really, I'd have to credit Paul West with this. Paul was a history buff, and he knew that the connection that we had to Spain, and just felt like that we owed it to the heritage of our city and the relationships in the past to do the things that we're currently doing. So probably within another year, it'll be complete. But anyway, it's a place that really, if you have visitors, that is be something that you could take and show them. I have two proclamations, and the first one is about bullying prevention week proclamation. I'd ask our district attorney, Ashley Rich, and her team of Terrell Patrick, Chardina Jones, Lindsay Riles, Bailey Hurd, and Casey Dells to join us at the podium. Okay, the proclamation reads, whereas Mobile County Coalition Against Bullying is comprised of volunteer community leaders and business organizations throughout Mobile County who are dedicated to solving the problem of bullying in our community, and whereas the coalition has slated October 17th through 23rd as a week to bring awareness to bullying and ways we can prevent bullying, and whereas the city of Mobile stands proudly with the Mobile County Coalition Against Bullying and their efforts to put an end to bullying in our community, now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby formally recognize the week of October 17th through 23rd as Bullying Prevention Week in the city of Mobile. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to thank each of you for recognizing that bullying is an issue in our community, and it's one that we are doing, have taken great strides to tackle with our young people, and I appreciate the opportunity for y'all to proclaim this week. Thank you.
The American Pharmacist Month proclamation for those that are here to receive that, if y'all would come down, please. And Kevin, you're going to have to help me. Astle? Yep. So we have Kevin Astle, Karen Marlowe, Julie Farah, Sarah Grace Barnes, Laura Harris, and Bradley Graves. So which one of y'all? I'm going to give it to you. And who's going to make remarks? Y'all decide. And the proclamation reads, whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest of the health professions concerned with the health and well-being of all people, the use of medication as a cost-effective alternative to more expensive medical procedures is becoming a major force in moderating overall healthcare costs, and whereas today's powerful medications require greater attention to the manner in which they are used by different patient population groups, both clinically and demographically, pharmacists are specifically educated with a focus and level of expertise on medication therapy that exceeds that of other healthcare providers, and whereas pharmacists are ideally suited to work collaboratively with other healthcare providers and patients to improve medication use and outcomes through medication therapy management, and whereas pharmacists provide both expertise and accessibility, which are crucial to patients further, to patients fully optimizing access to medications and provide patient care that ensues optimal medication therapy outcomes, and whereas the American Pharmacists Association, the Auburn University Harrison School of Pharmacy, the American Pharmacy Association Academy of Student Pharmacists have declared October as American Pharmacist Month with the theme Pharmacists. Easy to reach, ready to help. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby formally recognize the month of October as American Pharmacist Month.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Yep. Thank you for making remarks.
And I would like to thank everyone today for recognizing October as American Pharmacist Month, and I'd like to urge everyone here to please, when you're in the pharmacy, please say thank you to your pharmacist and pharmacy technicians. Throughout this pandemic, the pharmacists have stepped up a lot to really help with the vaccine efforts and testing efforts and our community response. So thank you all very much.
That would conclude my remarks.
And the announcement of the Public Works.
Yes. Other than, and I didn't know if you were going to do that before, I think y'all had a proclamation. So, you know, at this time, yes, we would like to present Major Paul Prime, excuse me, Chief Paul Prime, to the city council for your approval.
No, did you want to acknowledge the Public Works Department?
The employees.
I'm sorry, I don't have those notes.
Okay.
Don't worry, future chief.
Good morning. I rise this morning to recognize three employees from Public Works, our Public Services Department, our Parks and Recreation Department, and Public Works at Large. First, I'll have John Peavy recognize our Public Service Employee of the Month, LaBaron Johnson. John?
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's my pleasure to introduce Jeff Dees, who's the senior director, deputy director of sanitation now in the department. He's going to actually introduce LaBaron because he's had more working time with him. All I hear is the great things that LaBaron always does, the leadership that he provides, and he is an inspiration. Jeff?
Well, LaBaron Johnson, he's been with the sanitation department. Let me bring up my notes, I apologize.
Caught him off guard?
Yeah, I did. I thought you were going to do it. He's been here for 16 years with the sanitation department. He's one of my most dependable employees that we have. He, he's more than willing to do anything that we ask him to do. He assists in multiple routes each day. He also assists with the garage and doing their fueling of the fuel truck every week. He follows up with that with them. He's always got a great smile on his face, great attitude. He's one of, he's like a leader in our department over there. He takes command when he needs to to get the others far as training. He does everything that we ever need him to do, and we appreciate him being with us, and thank you. We appreciate it.
Another 32 minutes.
Yes. And I know we've got a lot to do today, so we're going to go through these. Next is Parks and Recreation Department, and Ms. Shawna Smith will recognize Dwayne Houston.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm employee of the month, it's Mr. Dwayne Houston. Again, I always want to reiterate that these employee of the months are selected by their peers, and they selected him because he is reliable and willing to work all the time, very easygoing person and get along with others, carries out work plans, well-managed and performs any task assigned to him. And that means a lot, because if your peers see this and recognize it, it's more to me than a supervisor who recognizes. So to Mr. Dwayne Houston, congratulations.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we'll have Jennifer White come down from our electoral department and recognize our Public Works at Large Employee of the Month, Gregory Herne.
Thank you. Just yesterday, I walked over to the electrical department to let Greg know that he had been selected as our employee of the month to represent Public Works at Large. The first thing he said to me is, "I don't know what I did to deserve this." He said, "I didn't do anything special." I said, "Greg, you were just yourself." He's an employee that exemplifies hard work, dedication, and teamwork. He's an example to other employees, and he has a can-do attitude. Not only is Greg a skilled electrician, he's a very talented welder, and on many occasions, he has used those talents to save the city time and money by making repairs that we didn't have to send out to somebody else. And so for that, we say, "Greg, we're proud to have you represent us as the employee of the month."
We would like for the employee of the month to come before the dais and take a picture with the council.
Okay.
Want them down here?
That's perfect.
Yeah, you can come across.
Well, gather up. Get the three of you guys, come right down here.
Mr. Mayor? Want to join us?
Slide the chairs back to these people. Slide.
Good morning, Jim. Flip it in.
Good deal.
Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. President.
Yes, Ms. Richardson?
While they are being seated, this is a perfect time. What happened to Mr. John Peavy?
Gone.
John? Oh, he's up there? Yeah, I want to make sure. It's a perfect time for me to raise this issue. A couple of weeks ago, put my garbage out, everything looking good. Came back home, there was no lid on my can. I sent it in, and I still don't have a lid. John, I need my lid, man.
You sent it to the wrong email address. You sent it to my personal one. We'll have this afternoon.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Every year, under the great leadership of my friend Tina Peroud in Tillman's Corner, there's a program of high school seniors, and these guys are in a pretty structured program, and it's called the Tillman's Corner Area Learning Leadership Program, or TALL. The program allows these students to see things that maybe they wouldn't. Certainly, one of those is the inside of the mayor's office, and to be able to spend 30 minutes with him asking questions at will. It has always been my pleasure to support this program as the Mobile County's brightest come in for a day, be a part of the city, but for a year, be a part of their county and learn about how to serve and who's serving and how things happen. Tremendous program. Again, it is one of the things that I will miss greatly as I leave office. So it'd be my pleasure now, and if, when I've called all the names, if each one of you will come up, we'll take that picture just like they did, and then depending on your schedules, you can depart. Again, in no particular order, Mackenzie Burnett from Davidson High School, Evan Kramer of Theodore High School, Hunter Gibson of Cottage Hill Christian Academy, Tia Lofton from Theodore High School, Isabella Norman Baker High School, Nina Peru of McGill Tulane Catholic High School, Jalen Swink of Bryant High School. Last but not least, Grace Ann Taylor, Cottage Hill Christian Academy. Well, good morning again, everybody. This is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and as you see, our council members are wearing pink. Most of our staff is wearing their pink, and we have several other folks here in the audience also wearing pink in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation. Before I read it, I would like to ask the representatives from the American Cancer Society if you all would join me here at the podium. Susanna Weeks, Jennifer Byrd, Jennifer Lopez, and Marie Dickinson. Whereas it is estimated that nearly 276,000 Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year alone, with more than 42,000 of those lives being lost to this terrible disease. And whereas breast cancer is the second most common cancer in women, yet with education, early detection, and innovative treatments, it can be defeated. Whereas we can all play an important role in winning this fight by raising awareness of this disease, its warning signs, and the importance of screenings through encouraging all women and men to find out if they are at increased risk as a result of family history or other factors, speak with their healthcare providers, and get regular mammograms and screenings. And whereas this month also provides the opportunity to honor those who've lost their fight to this disease, the courageous survivors who have and are still prevailing against it, and all of the members of the medical community who work every day to defeat it. And whereas, working together, we can and will conquer this disease. Now therefore, I, Gina Gregory, and council member of District 7, along with all of my colleagues here in the Mobile City Council, as well as Mayor Stimson, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Mobile, and we are told our citizens to join us in raising awareness. Here is the official proclamation, and if you would, introduce everyone who is here, and then just say a few words about some of the activities that are going on this month.
Thank you so much. I want to say thank you to the distinguished council, staff, mayor, everyone for bringing awareness to this topic. We are very proud of the work we do at the American Cancer Society, so we want to thank you for joining and standing alongside of us and honoring those who are surviving, those are thriving, and those people who we've lost. So thank you so very much. Today, I'm honored to have Susanna Weeks, my colleague, fellow senior development manager, Marie Dickinson, who is the chairman of the board, and Jennifer Byrd, who is the committee chair of Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. And right now, we have Real Men Wear Pink, and I just want to tell you, gentlemen, pink looks good on you. It looks really good on you. Standing up for this fight is not just a women's issue, so we need more men. So the Real Men Wear Pink campaign, we're very proud of, and I would like to let Jennifer talk about the Making Strides event. Thank you. And I want to join in saying thank you very much for bringing awareness to this, and I would like to ask everyone to please join us on October 30th at our beautiful Cooper Riverside Park. We are having an in-person walk this year for our Making Strides event. Last year, we had a wonderful event at the beautiful USS Alabama, but it was a drive-through. It's not quite the same thing as everyone being able to get together and join in this fight, and so we ask you to join us, join in the fight, and help those who are fighting this continue to fight, and we just thank you once again for your time today. Thank you.
Ms. Gregory? Yeah, we are very strong supporters of the council, with the breast council, so we really want to take pictures with you all, too. So if you can just invite your guests, come before the dais, and Mayor, would you like to join us on this one also? Thank you all so much for your hard work. So we want to thank you for joining and standing alongside of us and honoring those who are surviving, those are thriving, and those people who we've lost. So thank you so very much. Today, I'm honored to have Susanna Weeks, my colleague, fellow senior development manager, Marie Dickinson, who is the chairman of the board, and Jennifer Byrd, who is the, the committee chair of Making Strides Against Breast Cancer. And right now, we have Real Men Wear Pink, and I just want to tell you, gentlemen, pink looks good on you. It looks really good on you. Standing up for this fight is not just a women's issue. So we need more men. So the Real Men Wear Pink campaign, we're very proud of. And I would like to let Jennifer talk about the Making Strides event.
And, and I want to join in saying thank you very much for bringing awareness to this. And I would like to ask everyone to please join us on October 30th at our beautiful Cooper Riverside Park. We are having an in-person walk this year for our Making Strides event. Last year, we had a wonderful event at the beautiful USS Alabama, but it was a drive-through. It's not quite the same thing as everyone being able to get together and, and join in this fight. And so we ask you to join us, join in the fight, and help those to, who are fighting this, continue to fight. And we just thank you once again for your time today.
Thank you.
Ms. Gregory, yeah, we are very strong supporters of the council, with the breast council. So we really want to take pictures with you all, too. So if you can just invite your guests, come before the, the dais. And Mayor, would you like to join us on this one also? Thank you all so much for your hard work.
We need our Team Gina t-shirts.
Yeah, yeah, I felt a council lady, Ms. Gregory, she's a survivor from breast council, so. Thank you all. To my fellow council members, to the mayor and administration, city clerk and her staff, and to the audience in the city of Mobile, again, good morning. When someone moves away, they create a void in our hearts, which can never be filled again. Then we start searching for substitution pieces. The one who fit perfectly get fitted. But at the end of the day, that first someone can never be replaced. This morning is pretty much built a suite of introducing this person. I actually told them that they was coming down to talk about ARP funding to get them to come down here. Ms. Debbie Foster, will you please come down? She is a very hard worker in the district, especially in the Dolphin Island Parkway community. When I first took council back in 2012, one of the first person that Jermaine told me about was Debbie. And she wanted to take me and give me some wine and listen to her talk about nature and peninsula, unless you say she still do. But I make sure I drink coffee with her, if I can stay awake. But, um, let me tell you how much love she only has, not only for District Three, but for the city of Mobile. She is moving away from Mobile on tomorrow. And I told her, I said, I need you to come down and advocate for the peninsula, you know, and to come and talk about funding. And I said, it's going to be an added agenda. And she stopped what she was doing. In the midst of packing, she moved her way out of town to come down to advocate for the peninsula of Mobile, which is in District Three. I cannot really find too many people like Ms. Debbie Foster. Proclamation. I'm gonna ease a cry myself, so please don't cry. Whereas Debbie Foster has played a pivotal role in the peninsula of Mobile. A grassroots group that she organized and led for over fifteen years. In Dog River Clear Water Revival, where she served as the executive director for five years. In the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program, where she worked as the media coordinator for several years. And she's an active participant in the map of Mobile. These are just a few of the many causes she rallies for. And whereas she is a huge advocate for the green development and worked tirelessly on planning at the citywide scale how the big picture affect the outcomes at smaller levels. And whereas Debbie also recognized the value of educating people about issues and how they can have a positively, positive rather than negative impact, always ready and willing to give effective presentations to small or large audience, young or old. And whereas Debbie received the Alabama Wildlife Federation 2021 Governors' Conservitation Achievement Land Conservatives of the Year Award. And although she's retired from Dog River Clear Revival in April of this year, and will retire from the peninsula of Mobile in October, her efforts to preserve and protect our local area have forever made a difference in the city of Mobile. Now therefore I, CJ Small, Vice President, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim October the 12th, 2021, as Mrs. Debbie Foster Day. In Mobile, and urge all of our citizens to join us in celebrating this momentous occasion done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 12th day of October 2021. CJ Small, Vice President of the Mobile City Council. We wish you the best on your big adventure, retirement. Know that you are loved and will be missed. Come back and visit often. It doesn't matter how far you go. There will always be a special place for you here in the DIP area, which is the heart of District Three.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, Ms. Richardson.
Yeah, when y'all get to making the group picture, we would like for Debbie to come up here and stand with us and make a picture.
We just do it all at one time, man. Um, we want to hear from Debbie, and this is all her supporters. She thought they was coming to talk about ARP, but they was actually coming to support her retirement and wish you the very best. You want to just say a free words to us? I know you shocked, but go ahead.
You are the best liar. And that's not good to say about someone who runs for political office. I don't know what to, I haven't cried yet, but I guess you did it now. When I had the privilege of covering the change of government as a news reporter in the eighties, and then had the privilege to serve with Arthur Outlaw as the first mayor under the new form of government, it changed my life in seeing the way government actually works. And in Mobile, the form of government we have is a very prized possession. We no longer teach civics in school, and I don't think the average person today understands the way it works. We can do things. We most certainly can. And if Dolphin Island Parkway, there's my Arthur. He serves on our board. If, if we on the Parkway can make a difference, then anybody can. I didn't go to college. I'm not anything special. I just love that bay. And I know that we take a lot of advantage of our waters that we don't need to take advantage of. I encourage you, the council, to please, please require trash cans in the design phase during the UDC passage. We will never get a handle on litter if we don't give people the proper opportunity to throw it away. I beg you to give the peninsula, and Mayor Stimson, you were there at my very first week attempt at a watershed management plan. We now have a watershed management plan. Thanks to Mo, thanks to Mobile Bay National Estuary Program. Thank you to Mobile Bay Keeper. Thank you to Alabama Coastal Foundation, to Partners for Environmental Progress. I saw Jennifer up here. We have so many people who believe in the waters of Mobile. Let's keep them clean and work together. Thank you.
I had an opportunity, I goes jet skiing all the time, but this past week, yeah, Thursday, I had an opportunity to go under the new bridge, Park Street Bridge, by kayak. And so thank you due to her. She's supposed to be, took me out, but yeah. Look at everyone just line up here. We're going to take a picture this way. If a person can come this way, Mr. Mayor, and then we're going to come up with the council. Come on, on this side here.
Come on, come up here. CJ. Are they gonna?
This way.
I didn't do this by myself, y'all. Oh, get out of my way.
Suitable for framing. Very nice. Looks good. Everybody smile.
Some will, some won't.
Force of nature, huh? Good one.
Debbie. So glad I get to see you.
Alright, we're good. Thank you.
I was too.
Mr. Vice President, if I might.
Ms. Gregory.
While Debbie is taking her seat, you know, I couldn't help but take a note on one of the things that she said when she was speaking to us, and she said, you know, she was nothing special. Well, I think we all take exception to that, Debbie. Did you hear that? We know that you were very special. And for everything that you have done, thank you for all your advocacy, advocating for your district and for the city, and you didn't stop. You haven't stopped, even today. So thank you very much. And I have to wonder, when you and CJ were drinking wine and talking, I know how you talk, so how many hours was that? And how many bottles of wine? But congratulations, and just, you know, we wish you well on all of your next adventures.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Mr. Dais.
I move the adoption of the agenda with the exception that we move item 03858 to the top of the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes.
Appeal on today's agenda are two requests for a waiver on the noise ordinance in Cathedral Square on March 26th and on Providence Street on October the 30th.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion passes.
Now, before public hearing, sir, if you don't mind.
Do you want to do that?
Before the public hearing, yes, please.
Okay, sure. Resolutions held over, 03858, confirm the appointment of Paul O'Prine as police chief.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, if we need to say something, let me just say that Chief Prine worked at the 30th precinct, I think from 2013, for five years. And we saw crime drop by twenty-six percent. And no one believed that, that, that it happened. But it did. And let me tell you, one of the magic of Paul Prine, he came to all my meetings. He gave his telephone number out. They know, they, they knew him in District One. And let me tell you what the magic is of that. Ain't no police officer gonna abuse anybody who knows him. And they, that they, if they know each other. You got to worry about that. But when you are not known, you're subject to be mistreated. But if you are known by the officer who stopped you, ain't nothing happening. He made himself known. Knew who he was. They knew how to contact him. So people don't call the police because they afraid that what the information they giving to the police gonna get back to the people they're calling on. But when they get to know who the police officer is, and they get to trust the police officer, they'll tell the police officer any kind of information they have that might result in, in, in the arrest of a criminal. And that is what happened in, in precinct three. It's still happening in precinct three. You look at precinct three's record. Because I don't call no meeting without the police. Police been with me since 2000. My people know the police. And that's why they turn them in. You come in District One, they turn you in, you going down. But to have such an officer as that now to lead the police department and probably can implement some of these programs that you used in District One all over the system, and I believe we will see that same twenty-six percent drop in crime across the city of Mobile.
You know, the council members?
Yes.
Ms. Rich.
Thank you. I've actually done this a number of times as a representative from District Six. It's my pleasure to do it again, to confirm an officer that has come from the ranks, which I think speaks very highly to then become chief of police. I think it speaks to the professionalism of the department and gives our citizens a sense that everyone in that force is exemplary and well-trained. So again, that's something that I know is giving a boost of confidence to our citizens. The other thing is the understanding that whoever sits in the seat of chief will actually live in our city. And I've made that a benchmark for every chief that I've had the opportunity to vote for. I believe living among us is very, very important because it really then weaves together our quality of life here and allows the chief, the top commander of your force, to be integrated into the community. So I look forward to that, and I know that will happen. So again, I am honored to be able to vote in the nomination that the mayor has put forward. Thank you.
You know, the council members.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I had a very nice conversation with Chief last week. Amazing person. And you wonder sometimes where the, you know, where that mark was. I think mayor got asked this morning by some students, where, where was that time when you knew you, you made it? You know, that you were making the right decisions and path was, you know, life was on the right path. My wife says it's when he showed up at her office with the kids many, many years ago. And as we know, Chief has a great big smile. So do his, so do his kids. And you need only look back to someone's family to know what kind of leader they are and what kind of impact they're going to have on your organization. Said all that to say, there is no question in my mind that we've picked the right one, and I would just simply say to the police force, buckle your seatbelts, here we go. Congratulations, Chief.
I'd like to piggyback behind what some of, you know, Councilman Williams has stated, you know, I believe that the mayor did pick a right one, and be honest, and I have not been quiet about the situation, I was really an advocate for us going outside of the police department, you know, one of our colleagues on this dice always says that if you keep doing the same thing, you keep getting the same results. And pretty much, we know that crime is something that we really battles in our city, and we got to get a hand on it. So my thoughts was that we need somebody to come in with overview as, who could be experienced, you know, someone that possibly, that was Chief at one time, and the mayor went out and the Chief was replaced. But when I had the opportunity to talk to Chief, you know, Prime, and, and when he told me that, you know, he lived in Alabama Village for 19 years, I said so, because I know that living in Alabama Village and not disgracing that community at all, again, we talk about, you know, years ago, not, nothing presently, that, you know, it wasn't, you know, a good, you know, good things going on in that particular neighborhood at the time. But I really wanted someone that could relate to many people that are committing a crime this day and time, and listen to Chief Prime, you know, it tells me, or he told me, and he showed me, that he could relate to people that are committing a crime within our city. But I charge you, Chief, you know, as Councilman, you know, Richardson has stated that crime had decreased in that precinct, I charge you that crime would decrease in the city of Mobile, that's my charge to you. And I guess you say I might be telling you what to do or whatever, but I did it publicly, because again, it's not about me, it's about the citizens, not just in District 3, but the city of Mobile and our image. And I hate for people, and for one thing I hate about one particular show, which is 48 Hours, you know, putting Mobile on there, it seemed like Mobile's a bad city, it's not, Mobile's a lovely city, we have jewels here, and that's what I want to really show off, is our treasure that's inside the jewel box, and then believe this gonna happen on the foundation of your leadership. Again, congratulations. Any other council members?
Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you, I too congratulate you, Chief, on your promotion, and like Mrs. Rich, I have been a part of approving a number of new police chiefs, a couple that I see here in this auditorium today. So congratulations, and I look forward to working with you, as well as introducing you to the citizens of District 7. In fact, I have a couple of meetings coming up, we've already gotten them scheduled, so you will be getting a notice, and I just look forward to having you come and speak, and let everybody know who you are and what you're about, and then any changes that you have coming up, we just look forward to hearing about those, and helping you and your team do their jobs.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Daze.
Thank you. Chief Prime, I look forward also, along with my colleagues, to working with you going forward, and congratulations on your appointment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you have anything?
Appreciate all, everything that the City Council, all your remarks, you know, it's a very arduous process that we went through to select the Chief, and so we feel very comfortable in that selection, and we look forward to your confirmation, so thank y'all very much.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In a pose?
No.
Pass. Congratulations.
When's the ceremony?
Chief, Councilman Richardson said we had everybody else up here who's coming joined us.
I can't say no to that, Councilman.
Have you selected the date?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great, come on, if I can come before the dice, the command staff, and also, yeah. Club say the direction. They can come on the front.
Yeah, they do it in the courtroom.
According to the mayor, the effective date is right now, he is the Chief, right now.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Public hearings, today's a public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to special needs athletes program doing business as SNAP Airport Shuttle Service to operate a shuttle service.
Now, this opened up our public hearing, do we have anyone to come down and speak on this particular item? Yes, sir, come on down, give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, honorable councilmen and women, thank you so much, my name is Joe Marshall, I'm the Executive Director of Special Needs Athletes Programs, and we are the oldest-running special needs bowling organization in Mobile, designed exclusively for special needs athletes. We've been doing this, well, we actually received our charity authorization from the IRS in 2008, but we really started in 2004. With all of that said, we've continued up through even past the COVID-19 situation that all of us have been through, and we continue to do that. In addition to that, I do owe you, on behalf of all of our special athletes, in the vicinity of 60 to 70 of them on a weekly basis, when we are able to get out there and enjoy our league, we like to say that we are spreading happiness, and I think that's really important in our situation in today's client activities. But back in May of 2018, we were so proud, so proud to be proclaimed as the special needs ambassadors to the city of Mobile, and we plan on bringing in a tournament every year, hopefully, in the near future, starting in this year, at the end of the year, in December, right now, our first one will take place, and hopefully, we will be bringing in many other special needs bowlers from other cities throughout Alabama. With all of that said, again, we thank you for your past support, and we appreciate anything that you can do for us. We want to remain a self-sustaining nonprofit organizations, as we have been for the most part in the past, and with your vote of approval for this, this will go a long ways in helping us to sustain, sustain that. Anyone have any questions that I'd be more than happy to help as much as I can?
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, Mr. Marshall.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here that want to speak on this particular item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today's a public hearing to declare the structures at 104 Colvin Street, 2724 Josephine Street, 672 Stanton Road, 1918 St. Stevens Road, and 955 Kentucky Street, public nuisances and order them demolished.
Is there anyone that's present in the audience, that want to come down and speak on this audit, you may come down and do so, please state your name and your address.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Margie Diane Richardson-Bush. This is not my native city, it is my home, and I love the one I live in.
Can I get your address, please, Ms. Bush?
672 Stanton Road.
Okay, thank you.
In the Tolleville area. I'm here because my property was cited. I'm here to let you know that I'm prepared to remedy the situation, to renovate my home, which I've always wanted to do, since I had to move out less than a year ago because of the weather. I've been living in a extended stay facility, but while I'm there, before I left my home, I made sure that I had it secure. It has a tarp covering all of the damaged area. I do my best to maintain the yard. I don't always get a notice from my neighbors, but when I do, I come and I bring the yard man with me. I've lived in that home since 20, since 2000. I raised my three children there, they all graduated from LaFlore Magnus School, they're all alive and well and blossoming, they're blessed with grandchildren. The main reason I have to remain in my home is for my grandchildren. They're five in Arlington, Texas, and three here, and they're all very young, they live in an apartment. I want them to run on grass. Y'all might not believe this, I was playing with my grandchildren, and I wanted to take them outside, they had a fit, they had never stepped on grass in Mobile, Alabama. I said to my daughter, what? She says, well, Mama, they've always lived in an apartment. So anyway, I've talked to my attorney, Mr. Roman, Norman, Norman Roman.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, members of the council, we'd like to ask the council for additional time to decide on Ms. Bush's property at 672 Stanton. She has an estimate for a roof repair, which she's also arranged to have paid for, so she has an actionable plan for this property, to keep it in her family and to restore it, and we'd like to ask the council for additional time to make this decision on 672 Stanton.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes, 672 Stanton Road is in District 1, I'm elected representative for District 1.
I'm quite familiar, Mr. Richardson.
With 60 days, be, first of all, you all need to go get a permit to do the repairs, you need to get a permit from the city of Mobile to, to make the repairs, and that'll, that'll put a stop on anybody trying to do anything else to get you out of there. So to stop all of that, you need to go and get a permit to do the repairs. So we, we're planning, planning to lay this over for 60 days.
60 days.
Give a chance to get our business straight.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
And again, as Mr. Richardson stated, that this can come back before the council in 60 days, so as long as the work is completed, everything's all, will be all good. Thank you all. Say if you can state your name and your address.
Yes, I'm David Sumraw, I live at 807 Magnolia Road, and concerning the property at 104 Colvin Street, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council members for giving us opportunity, and our clerks do such a good job. I've been in business at 102 Colvin Street, it's one block off of Florida, next to the old Dolphine Apartments, for over 40 years. At that location, there's a house next door, 104, no roof, no ceiling, no floor, nobody's lived there for over five years, and we just think, y'all probably aware of the situation over there, and we just ask that, we would like this to come to resolve it, get a vote against it, get it condemned, and, and help us clean up that area. We do try to show a little pride over there, in that area, things are picking up, and we'd like to be a part of that, and we just ask your consideration to mainly get this resolved. We'd like to say it's been a 10-year battle, the last five years have been really, really bad, and we would just ask for your support on resolving this, it affects my business, my customers comment, for everyone that comments, 10 more think the same thing, it's, it's the only house on the street like that, and we would ask y'all's consideration to resolve this as quickly as possible.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Ms. Richardson.
Any questions for me?
No, sir.
Thank you.
104 COVID Street is in District 1. Just, just, hear me out, 104 COVID Street is in District 1, where I represent, it is deplorable, and we would be recommending today that it be demolished.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Give us your name and your address, please.
Christopher Black, 955 Kentucky.
Yes, sir.
I've been intending to do the work on the house, but COVID came, and one of the guys on the job had COVID, I had to go out 14 days, and I've been intending to get back on it, if y'all give me a chance, you know, I'll get back on to fix it, you know, put it back in order.
When do you think, Mr. Black, that you'll be able to, you know, get on that?
I can start on it this week, I'd have to get the building permit first.
Yeah, you, you're gonna have to get a permit, trying to clean the area up, I think I've seen you a couple of times over there, and please, help the community.
Yes, sir.
Please, I'm gonna ask this council to allow you 60 days, and this can come back before us, I ask you today to go and try to apply for a permit, to go ahead and start, you know, working on it and everything.
I know, I better apply for the permit.
Yes, sir.
You know, I had to come here first, to see what y'all, you know, let me do, and I'll just get started on that.
Yeah, we're gonna grant you 60 days, but please, try to get that. Yeah, we're going to grant you 60 days, but please, try to get that together.
Oh, yes, sir.
Trying to clean up the community.
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that's here to talk about any of these items? If not, this concludes the public hearing.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Shemaine Fortune Thompson.
I was supposed to be on the list as well. This is my mother. We're talking about the same issue. My name is Eugene Thompson, 2012 Clement Street, Mobile, Alabama. For over two years, members in the Toma Ville community and my family have been asking about the development of the Florida Peggy Grayson-Fortune Walking Trail. Week after week, month after month, year after year, we have been getting excuses for why the trail has not been done. I am here today to request that the Florida Peggy Grayson-Fortune Walking Trail be completed by Councilman Richardson, and that he is allowed to do so by Mayor Stanley Stinson. This was a standalone project to honor my grandmother, a community leader, and a city worker, and has been neglected and halted by the administration for over three years, even before COVID-19 started. This project should not be a part of any political agendas or personal campaigns, but about the life and the legacy of my grandmother, who gave herself and her resources for over 55 years to serve the city of Mobile and the citizens of the Toma Ville community. This project was voted on and passed with all council members' agreement, and money was given for it in 2017, yet still today, in 2021, our community is looking at an unfinished trail. Community members and myself are saying our parks, our communities, and our community leaders matter. Finish the Florida Peggy Grayson-Fortune Walking Trail and the new park projects that have been added in the past year or so at Figures Park. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Richardson.
I believe that the Fortune family deserves to get an update on what's going on over there. We have allocated $800,000 to get this project finished, and I would like for someone from the administration to tell them where we are and when they can expect this project to be completed. They have waited long enough.
So, one of the things I do want to say before I start, the trail is a part of the bigger project. The bigger project expected end date is December 1st. Most of the trail is done. What we're waiting right now for is the name plate that goes over the arch is being handmade, and so we're behind on that. So, like most materials are behind, we're hoping to get that by the end of this month, and then it'll go up. But we're also doing the bathrooms, the concession, the pool, the pavilions there, and it's all a part of a big project, so it's not that they're going to... So, we may be done with the trail, but the park is still being worked on. So, the ultimate project, which is the whole Figures Project, will be done December 1st.
Okay. But what we would like to do is, once you get the plate and all of that up there, we can wait on the pool. I think we need to come, the new council member, somebody to come and cut the ribbon and follow... They're waiting on something to be done to honor Mrs. Florida Fortune, and I think once we get, where the archway is and all of that, get all of that there done, I think we can do something there.
When we get it, that can be a possibility, but you'll still have the rest of the park that's not complete. That may be there, but we're waiting. We got the picture. I know there was some sizing and clarity, so we got that fixed. Right now, we're waiting on the name archway plate to be completed.
Okay.
All right.
We had a layout. Will it be exactly like the layout, and also with...
Yeah, yeah. Time has expired. For the audience to know that they signed up three different names on one sheet, so I'm not too sure if someone else is going to speak, but your time has expired.
No, I'm not going to speak.
Okay, okay.
I'm not going to speak.
Okay, then, all right, then.
Yes.
But you all can talk to Ms. Smith afterwards, and she can explain to you, you know, a little bit more what's going on with the park and the trail, and what it looks like and everything.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Thank y'all for coming. Madam Clerk.
Since it's 12 o'clock, or nearly 12 o'clock, we need to start the canvas of the votes.
Okay.
Mr. Vice President, did you want to go ahead and...
Should we just go ahead and take a recess?
Okay, we're going to, we'll go ahead and let ESNS start, putting the cartridges in, the jump drives in to put the votes up, but we'll finish the speakers.
Okay.
I don't know why we couldn't do, keep going with the agenda.
I think...
Okay.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Irene Anton. Do you have a microphone, Ms. Anton?
No, I cannot.
Yes, ma'am, we will.
My name is Irene Anton. I live on the interstate. I live on 2202 Clinton Street, and I'm here today to talk about all churches in Mobile and over the United States, about the kidney transplant, the kidneys thing, and my thing is that if anybody in anybody's family have a situation with your kidney, that place is gone by behind McGill. I'm from Friendship Baptist Church. We started this because we had a young lady named Stephanie Fridge, and she had a kidney transplant, walked from the hospital home because she stayed in the area. Then, one day, it didn't work out. She passed. So, we started at our church because you have people coming from out of town, coming from out of town to be with their family, and it winds up, they have to get a hotel or something, something. So, we got the tabs from your Coca-Colas, from your whatever drink that have a tab on it. You save it till you get a lot of them, and you take them to McDonald House, and that helps them, help you, whatever the situation is with your family, with them trying to find somewhere to sleep and go over there, okay? For the kidneys that's over there behind McGill, whatever family, whatever church, or whatever, we give them pennies. My church give them, the pennies are rolling 50s. We give them the pennies from once, once a month, or you might give it to them before then, depending on how many pennies you have wrapped and taken over there, and you can name your church and whatever, and let them know, because this is really important. One person, family, the one that we, Mrs., the restaurant lady, her family gave her two, both of her kidneys, and she had to go to Birmingham, come back home smiling, and well, you know the difference, because I have the resolutions to take to the family, okay? Now, we have one more thing. We got to do it, you all. We got to do it. To my knowledge, I don't guess nothing happening in my family. I'm 89, and I'm on vic sas. So, that's about the size of it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Anton. Madam Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, in the absence of our mayor, to the administration, our citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good afternoon. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Going to run through these items as briefly as I can with 180 seconds. 08847, I actually want to thank the administration for being transparent on this. You actually explained what these resources would be towards and what it'd be used for. This is only something I've been asked for for quite some time, but it then comes right to 08848, and this is why an inventory list is so vital. The public then understands that we aren't wasting taxpayer resources on placing greater priority on materialistic matters over the needs of the people, where we see nearly 200K for these items, so I'm hoping that there is an inventory list that can be provided. This has been requested for several months now. Regarding 08849, are these cameras for MPD vehicles, and how are the 80 specific vehicles selected to have the cameras installed? 08851, what are robot systems, and the purpose, excuse me, and the purpose of their functioning, and the intent of this purchase? 08852, were there any additional companies involved in this bidding process, because nearly $80,000, this seems to be quite a bid for 12 pairs of binoculars? 08853, is there an available inventory list for the police-mounted unit? 21-855, I'm just trying to get clarity on this, so we're paying for consulting services on video surveillance, and I'm trying to see what is that for, and then this says per year. So, do we plan to find, excuse me, do we plan to fund this item beyond this current fiscal year, and will it be at that same rate of 100K per year, again, for consulting on video surveillance? All right. Then we move to 27-859. I just want to urge this body to be very mindful of the decision, as it may prove to be quite premature. This is a little different than what was done the last time that this same practice was done here. There was actually a recess taken, so I'm really just trying to see where's the consistency with this as well, but I'm sure that we will get to a solution very soon. On 68893, is there any reason that this item won't pass unanimously by the city council, and would there be a reason for these funds to be received in a timeframe greater than six months from now? So, I would just like to have an answer. And finally, I just want to make it very clear here, just in one week, we spent 700, well, we intend to, depending on the vote of this council, we intend to spend $779,447 on materialistic approaches to combat public safety. Nearly $800,000. I would love to see this amount throughout an entire year for proactive groups, projects, plans, data-proven results that actually work. I believe we will see a real difference in City of Mobile. Thank you so much for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and I will speak on one, which we have learned in pre-council, 08-849. Those cameras would not be going into the police cars more as a multiple, I believe it's the administration objected to make sure that every vehicle that the city do own be equipped with, you know, those cameras and everything. If anything else the administration want to add, they can do so at this time.
Taxpayer dollars. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk.
Resolutions held over. If you don't mind, I'll take them all together.
Take them.
08847, approved purchase order to Sampson Equipment to rebuild side load arm for garbage truck. 08848, approved purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for patrol vehicle upfitting for 18 vehicles. 08849, approved purchase order to Lydix for drive cam subscription and installation for 80 cameras. 08850, approved purchase order to Recon Robotics for two bomb protection devices. 08851, approved purchase order to WW Granger for robot systems for the police department. 08852, approved purchase order to Kessler Police Supply for 12 night vision binoculars. 08853, approved purchase order to Kingdom Horse Trailers for horse trailer for the police-mounted unit. 08854, approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment for fire safety training trailer. 21855, approved contract with Protech Video for video surveillance consulting services, police department. 21856, approved contract with UAV survey for telemetry capabilities. 60857, approved settlement agreement, Bannery.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Resolute passes.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, 27859 through 0 through 03895.
Excuse me. I just have, I apologize for this. If I could have the floor for a second about...
Ms. Rich.
03858, I mean, no, 57, which is to approve the settlement agreement.
Okay.
And I would like our attorney to just give us a little background about this, and I would like this on the record, if I may.
Yes, ma'am. The Bannery case was an appeal of a rezoning decision that was denied, application that was denied, I guess, a couple of years ago, property on East Drive in District 6. Suit was filed to ask the court to order the council to rezone it. After going back and forth in the litigation for quite some time, we were finally able to reach a settlement agreement, which the property would be rezoned, but with a lot of conditions, so that basically, we could have a mechanism, make sure that people do what they say they were going to do. And those were, the number of lots were reduced to 23 lots, as opposed to what they had asked for initially, which I think was 25 or 6, or something like that.
That came in.
There's going to be an added green space. This is new since last week. There's going, the houses will be required to be brick houses with attached garages, so it's more of a single-family setup. They will have to conform to the specifications set forth on some design documents that are attached to the settlement agreement. They'll have to get a new putt and a new subdivision to reflect all these changes. And... And also that the street will not connect to the adjacent neighborhood. So, it's not a kind of a cut through. And so, all those are the conditions of getting it rezoned. A consent order being by the judge, once this is signed. And then that ordinance will come back to the council, uh, to be voted on and all in the near future.
If, if I could also elaborate a little bit? Because this really does have a lot of significance. It's, um, housing near the University of South Alabama, and there's traffic concerns to establish neighborhoods. Um, by right, the owner could have put in nineteen homes, and this never would have come forward. They would have gotten the subdivision for the property, and that would have been the end of it. Um, they wanted a lot more homes, so the staff designated that it needed the R2. The R2 then, um, does make more density. So, the council will be asked to, and I don't know if that will be a separate or whether this just automatically happens when we agree to the settlement? Because I think the court will take care of the rezoning with those conditions.
The ordinance will have to come before the council.
For the, okay. And again, it would, I, I might not be here when that actually happens. So, um, we need the continuity through the record that all of these, um, items that was discussed in the settlement, um, be followed, uh, for this application. And also for any future land use, um, it would be mapped and designated to having these conditions in the R2. And again, um, I, I want to thank, um, Wanda Cochran. Uh, she had, um, had that, um, lawsuit, um, before she left. And to Chris Aldred, currently, uh, working with my office and crafting this settlement, working with the attorney from the other side of the aisle on this as well. It, it certainly, um, was interesting. The legal maneuvers were very interesting. I thank the council for working with my office. And, um, in my, um, when I'm gone and I, I see someone in this audience who will be sitting in this seat after we canvass the votes, um, and I'm glad that he's here to listen to this because it will require a plan unit development, which does not come to council. Um, it will be done at the planning commission, but that's a requirement. All this is in the language and following, um, your resolution of the rezoning that will designate the R2. So, just wanted to leave that. And also, if this could be, uh, maybe not in a hundred percent, but in the record, definitely what our attorney has represented, the settlement. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time. We'll skip over twenty-seven eight five nine until the results are ready. But it'll be thirty-seven eight sixty through zero three eight nine five.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Dase.
I move for immediate consideration of items twenty-seven, uh, excuse me, thirty-seven eight sixty through zero three eight ninety-five.
Second. Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Thirty-seven eight sixty, eight sixty-one, eight sixty-two, eight sixty-three, eight sixty-four, and eight sixty-five are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Ruby Tuesday on Range Line Road. For restaurant retail liquor license for Logan's Roadhouse on Airport Boulevard. Retail beer, table wine, off premises only for Fulton Food Mart on Dauphin Island Parkway. Retail beer, table wine, off premises only for Tanui Stop Shop on St. Stevens Road. Retail table wine, off premises only for Pop Shelf on Airport Boulevard. And retail beer, table wine, off premises only for SM Food Mart on Michigan Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Thirty-seven eight six six, approval certificate of public convenience and necessity to special needs athletes program doing business as Snap Airport Shuttle Service.
So moved.
Second. Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Congratulations.
Forty-eight six seven, declare the structure at one oh four Colvin Street. A public nuisance in order, it demolished.
So moved. Second. Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Forty-eight six eight, declare the structure at twenty-seven twenty-four Josephine Street. A public nuisance in order, it demolished.
Move delay over sixty days.
Second.
Promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Forty-eight six nine, declare the structure at six seventy-two Stanton Road. A public nuisance in order, it demolished.
Move delay over sixty days.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Forty-eight seventy, declare the structure at nineteen eighteen St. Stevens Road. A public nuisance in order, it demolished.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Forty-eight seven one, declare the structure at nine fifty-five Kentucky Street. A public nuisance in order, it demolished.
Move delay over sixty days.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
And I'll take the rest together. Fifty-eight eight seven two, assess cost for removal of weeds, weed lean group sixteen fourteen. Approve award of sixty-eight seven three, approve award of special bonus to the public service employee of the month, LeBaron Johnson. Sixty-eight seven four, a special bonus to Parks and Recreation Department Employee of the Month, Dwayne Houston. Sixty-eight seven five, approve award of special bonus to the September firefighter of the month, Fire Service Captain Michael Smith. Sixty-eight seven six, approve award of special bonus to the public works at, at large employee, Gregory Hearn. Zero three eight nine two, reappoint Kathy O'Keefe to the Citizens Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. Sixty-eight nine three, determine an appropriation to St. Dominic Parish. Mobile serves a public purpose and approved payment. Zero three eight nine four, reappoint Scott Peach to the Cove Advisory Committee. Zero three eight nine five, reappoint Derek Atkinson to the History Museum of Mobile Board.
So moved. Second. Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, this passes.
Okay, we can go back now to the canvas of the votes. Resi, uh, twenty-seven eight five nine, uh, if you'll suspend the rules for immediate consideration.
Mr. Dase.
I move for immediate consideration of item twenty-seven eight fifty-nine.
Second. Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, motion passes.
Twenty-seven eight five nine, declare the results of the October fifth runoff election.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion. I guess we have one of the candidates in the audience. Congratulations to you. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, passes.
CIP resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero eight eight seven seven and zero eight eight seven eight.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Dase.
I move for immediate consideration of items zero eight eight seventy-seven and zero eight eight seventy-eight.
Second.
Promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, passes.
Zero eight eight seven seven and zero eight eight seventy-eight, approved purchase order to Game Time for shade structure for the Dearborn Y M C A Playground and for shade structure at La, La, La Vreta Park Playground.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly move to second, end of discussion.
No, it's nice to see us voting on those.
I figured they're under the threshold.
All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, no CIP passes.
Resolution is being introduced for the first time, zero one eight seven nine through zero nine eight ninety-six.
These items will lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Announcements?
Uh, this start to my left, District Six, Ms. Beth Rich.
Thank you. Um, we'd like to congratulate the, um, duly elected, um, individuals in our audience. If you'll stand up so that everyone can see you. You'll soon be sitting somewhere on the dice. Congratulations. I'd like to, um, remind everybody that, um, on October thirtieth at Medal of Honor Park, and again, I said this last week, I'm really pleased to see the city administration and Parks and Recreation Plan things out at Medal of Honor. This will be, um, from three o'clock till nine thirty P.M. It's a fall festival with Halloween in mind. There's a fun run and a five K. There'll be food trucks and a pet costume party as well, and a dance. And again, that's from nine to, three till nine thirty. Um, I am pleased to see in our next week's agenda the, the allocations that will be coming to our animal shelter. That was a real public debate and, um, very much loved by people in our community for their, for their fur babies, so to speak. And I, um, looking forward to getting the breakdown of what those funds will go towards in running the shelter. There is also the Friends of the Animal Shelter. The council selected an advisory board, and I do hope that this administration will work with these entities to make it the best shelter it can possibly be for our citizens. Um, the recycling centers, as the mayor said, will open. The two that we have, which are, um, you don't have to separate. I know that people who wanted to recycle were using the Hit Road, which we are very, um, it's a wonderful facility. I know that I personally use that one because it's, it's close to where I go, and that's the county one. But you separate, and I know that people are looking forward to the single stream and being able to use those recycling centers. Um, and again, it was my honor and privilege to vote for the new chief of police, and I wish them all the very best. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Richison.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I don't have very much today. I would like to say that, um, those, um, citizens who play basketball at Sage Park have been complaining to me, um, more than a year that at ten o'clock, the lights went off at the park, but that you didn't go out for the rest of the park. That the other players kickball, soccer and so on, could still play ball. And I'm happy to say that all of the lights at Sage Park now, all the lights are going off at ten o'clock. They're all being treated the same. I think that's big. I don't think we ought to leave some in darkness and some in the light. Cut them all off and leave them all alone. So, I, I go to Sage Park and get my exercise in. And I'm happy to say that, um, they are cutting all the other lights off at ten o'clock. And so, uh, I'm, I'm happy about that. Um, you know, I've been asking about funding for the animal shelter. I'm concerned about the animal shelter. And found out that, uh, the funding for the animal shelters was, um, embedded in the Mobile Police Department's budget. But yet, the animal shelter was being run by the Administrative Services Department. Today, more than a million dollars was transferred from the police department over to the Administrative Services, to, to Snow and Division over there, and we're looking for great things to happen over there. Uh, uh, let me just say, I don't have no doubt that you do what is right over there. But I was glad to see that, uh, in my district, I have a lot of animal lovers, and they tell me about animals. And they've been trying to find out where the bunny, where is the money? So, today, they, they can, they would know where the money is to run the animal shelter. Thank you, Ms. President.
All right, District One, um, District Five, Mr. Dase.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would just like to, uh, add my congratulations to those of my colleagues, to those who, uh, were successful in the municipal election last week. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, four new members of the city council, and I look forward to working with each one of them, uh, and all of them, to move the city forward. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
All right, District Five. Now, we have one and only, District Seven, Ms. Gina Gregory.
Thank you. I want to thank the members of the Cobblestone Homeowners Association for inviting me to be a part of their annual block party on Sunday. And also, a big thank you goes to Captain Rodney Greeley, who came to be a part of the celebration. Um, the homeowners out there just love him, and they are, uh, very, they very frequently take treats to the precinct and get a chance to visit with all the officers there. So, thank you to them for all that they do. And of course, to Captain Greeley for attending and making sure that everyone was safe and secure. And, uh, best, and of course, the mayor had also mentioned about the recycling centers being opened. Um, the one in particular that, uh, I'm happy to see is on Museum Drive, which is in the district. Um, like you all, I have received a number of phone calls and emails asking when the recycling center would be reopened. So, tomorrow, take your, um, take your recyclables by the, um, recycling center over on Museum Drive. And last but not least, following this meeting at one o'clock, we have an Administrative Services Committee meeting. Uh, if you are here for that, uh, stick around, but we'll probably take a little break in between. We will be talking about, um, how the council can work with, um, a constituent liaison from the mayor's office to make sure that all of our processes with handling constituent concerns is, um, done, uh, in a very smooth manner and that we're all kept abreast of what is going on with each and every one of these issues. So, one o'clock. Thank, uh, are we gonna meet here or upstairs?
We can just, no.
Meet here?
We can just meet here.
Okay, that's fine. We'll be here then.
Did we say right after the council meeting, or did we say at one o'clock, Ms. Gregory? One o'clock, okay, okay, okay. All right, I'mma yield.
I thought it was right after.
Yeah.
We, we didn't pick a time, unless it was advertised with a time. I thought it was just, we were gonna...
There's...
Yeah.
Cassandra says we did send the release out at one, for one o'clock.
We did send it out for one o'clock, okay. We'll start at one o'clock. And I'm going to, uh, for District Two, I'm gonna give the floor for one minute for Ms. Ray Richison, uh, before she can, um, give us some information by Africa Town, if you don't mind.
Good morning.
Afternoon.
What time is it?
But it, it seems like morning.
Oh, my goodness. Well, good afternoon to the council, to the mayor's staff. Um, I come before you today to announce, um, a community meeting for the Africa Town community for its brownfields grant. It will be done virtually. It's the Brownfields one oh one training. Citizens may find the information on the city's website, um, on Facebook, and other, um, media outlets. Um, you will have to register for this, um, training, but I hope that all of you will join us and the citizens of Mobile. Um, this is the first time that we've done a virtual training for Brownfields one oh one. And so, um, the definition of a brownfield is idle, underutilized parcels of property that have the perception, only the perception, whether real or perceived, that is contaminated. But one of the things that this brownfield program will do will enable, um, communities to revitalize themselves and for developers to invest in those communities to make those communities a healthier and safer place in order to work and to live. So, I'm hoping that the community will come out, as well as the council, as well as administration, to, um, attend this virtual meeting. I think everyone will get a lot out of it. Um, it has been my passion for years, and I hope to spread the love for brownfields. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Williams, end of announcements. Uh, council, since it's just twelve twenty-seven, I think it'd probably be wise for us to move our committee meeting at one o'clock to the ninth floor. We always be up on the same floor with our offices and stuff. They give us a chance to use the restroom and et cetera. This move is there for the ninth floor. Sure, Vic.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Barbara.
There's, there's actually two informational meetings. One of them is with the constituent services, and that can happen at the ninth floor. And then we'll prepare the, um, informational meeting on the tenth floor.
Yes, sir.
Immediately thereafter.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
To direct people?
Yeah, just do a, a sign or something like that.
Now, that's not gonna be any kind of issue that we change locations, right? Because if somebody directs them...
If you got somebody here telling them, hey, I mean, we move the...
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we just put a sign up, be fine, okay? Anything else?
If they direct them.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Promptly move to second, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
In opposed, meaning is adjourned.